Call is June eighteenth. Twenty four, meeting of the County Commission to order, we will start to complacently.
I'd like to just to the line of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The all present, with our presence, Mr. Hagan is on Zoom, all other commissioners are here with the. Gary Mills. First item on the agenda will be the approval of minutes. So moved. Second. Mr. Ross, Commissioner Rusted. All in favor of approving events, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Pass. And then the next item is the order of agenda, do we have a motion to change the? Intent of the. So the, yeah, the order of the.
Yes, with the order of agenda, I would like to add one category into the agenda. It would be at seven, eight, for the Vision Zero Coordinator.
Alright.
Thank you.
Now the motion?
Yes, and that we include that and move on with the order of the agenda.
Second. Second, my Christian arrested, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass.
Mister Chair, Mr. Hagan, let me know if you can't hear.
I, I just got on, so the audio wasn't connecting on my end, so I, I heard like the last sixty seconds, let's say.
Good. Good. Alright, the, uh, the next item is the consent agenda, which consists of bills, employee status changes. Uh, overtime and a bond for the check reissue. Any commission, with any commissioner like anything both for examination or can I have a motion? So moved. Is that Ross? Mr. Ross is second. All in favor of the. Consent of, approval of the consent agenda. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Pass. Right, at this point, the next item on the agenda is the County Board of Equalization. So I have a motion to recess the commission meeting and go to the equalization board.
So moved.
Second, repeat, Mr. Rusted. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Pass. Alright. Good days.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair, members of the commission, we're just going to wrap up that one appeal we had from two weeks ago. The applicant appeals a twenty twenty four trifle value of one hundred and seventy thousand. The property is a single family residence built in nineteen thirty six, the property has one story, full basement with nine hundred six square feet. And detached garage, the property was part of a reappraisal area completed in the summer of twenty twenty three. The property owner did not respond to the letter hanging to get the time of the reappraisal. Ms. Littora, the Grand Forks City Assessor, Darren Winkler, Senior Real Estate Appraiser with the City of Grand Forks. And I did an interior inspection of the property on June fifth, twenty twenty four. The review of the property did find the property to be of lesser quality than observed from the exterior. Based on our inspection and Ms. Lizard's report, it is fair and reasonable to reduce the value. Mister Norman has been informed of the reduced value and agrees with the reconsidered twenty twenty four value. I recommend reducing the twenty twenty four trifle value to one hundred and forty seven thousand.
So moved. Right. Second, Mister Ross. Any other further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the next item.
Then for chairman, we need a motion to adjourn the order of equalization and.
Let's go back, go back to the recipe.
Yeah.
Oh, what?
I'm.
You have a motion?
Second. Uh, leave the previous. Session and reconvene it to the commission.
Yeah, Mr. Hagan, were you?
Oh, I got, I got it this time, yep.
Yeah, how quickly if you want to get in this.
I, I'm trying, I'm getting in there.
Alright, all in favor of the motion to return to the commission meetings, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Pass. And then, uh, seven is still the Regional Airport Authority's Board of Appointment, right?
Yes.
Okay. What's, what we have in the, uh. Documentation is the reappearance of Tim Luxler to the Airport Authority. Anyone have any questions? About that?
No, I made the motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, then I, I personally know Mister Russler, he's been on the board a long time, he's a good member of the Airport Authority and. I sort of support that, so. All in favor of Mister Luxler's reappearance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. So item seven A then will be Vision Zero.
Hello, everyone, um, my name is Caitlin Atkinson, for those of you who are not, happy to give you these. Uh, I was hired in twenty twenty at the end of the year as the Vision Zero Regional Coordinator, um, also the Grand Forks County Sheriff's Office. Um, my position, uh, continues to really focus on community education and outreach to really. Hunker down on that personal responsibility to make our roadways safer. And do what we can to create partners that help enforce that social messaging as well. Um, every year I try to come in and update you guys on what I've been doing, where we're at, how things are moving along. This year I'm excited to announce we are in process of adding two more coordinators. So my region will get slightly smaller, I'll cut down to about ten counties, um, if everything goes as planned. We'll add a position, um, in Steptman County, that one has been approved. Once that position is set, we're gonna add a position in, um, the western side of the state to cover kind of the. Dickinson, Williston, Williston kind of area, so that's gonna allow us to do our jobs, uh, even more in a higher capacity. Which we're really excited about, um, we are very busy, we put a lot of miles on, uh, we cover very large areas. And we had added, um, several programs to our, uh, list of things, so. Speaking of, I'm going to give you guys that list of things, um, these are the. Training opportunities and, uh. Tools that we have to offer our regions. Not only, um, are we limited to this, but we have the ability to add things, um, we have budgets that we can purchase things through. Through, uh, with the North Dakota Association of Counties, the DOT. And that allows us, um, to continuously expand the things that we offer. Some of the recent stations we offer, um, can range anywhere from just a very standard basic. What is Vision Zero? Um, but we can also focus, we've done things with FedEx and UPS and some of our other regions. We have done law enforcement focused trainings, um, I actually assisted. With child passenger safety training for the Grand Forks Police Department during their in-service training this year, which was, um. A good time, we, we always like getting our hands on car seats with those local enforcement agencies. We are in schools, probably more than anything, um, we do a ton of work. K through twelve, uh, one of our biggest programs is Impact Teen Drivers. That's a program I actually offer, um. Both high schools in Grand Forks and usually I'm. They're doing that every semester with their tenth grade health students and we focus on reckless and distracted driving. And then, um. Also this year we'll do summer school, so actually do that tomorrow, I'll go in and talk with the summer school tenth grade health classes. Again, to focus on that, that topic. Um, I actually spoke with Walsh County Commission this morning and we looked at some of the data for Walsh County after their fatality, um, two weekends ago. I know Grand Forks were seeing these as well, unfortunately, also lost life, um, in the last few weeks and that was not something. My, me, in my position, I don't take that lightly. DOT doesn't take that lightly, um, and we're consistently looking for ways we can encourage. The drivers that are going through that intersection because we know it's a problem, to put their phones down, to make safe choices, to make sure they're paying attention. Um, it's not always easy, it's not always simple or clear cut. Unfortunately, this situation, we probably are needing some engineering changes and those come at high dollar amounts. And so those again, not quick and easy fixes. But we'll do what we can to get messaging out to the drivers that are going through that intersection. Um, my phone down is a new program that we are offering, um, that started last year. And it is really just focused on people taking a pledge and knowing the risks of driving with out-of-sneak phones and driving distracted. So that is something you'll probably see popping up across the board, um, we have some fun swipe type stuff we can hand out when we do that as well. So a lot of the boosts that we do, um, are geared towards that topic. Uh, if you look to the backside of that document. The use are related fun things, um, these are things that people want to see, that they request, um. Our alcohol goes, those are not anything new, uh, we, I have some, the Sheriff's Office helps with some PDs help them. They're really cool tools, um, I'm lucky enough to have a thing next to it at my disposal as well with tow cart. Uh, we get that request quite often, uh, Foster County. Put in a request for that for their county fair, again this year, we took it there last year. Um, unfortunately, I will not be making the trip, um, getting that loaded up is a little more difficult these days, so I'm seven weeks off from having my second child. And so, um, we have one of our other regional coordinators covering that, so. Even when we have situations that I'm currently in, uh, we do still have coverage for those areas. Driving simulator is something that takes lots of places, it's currently set up at Dr. Ed here in Grand Forks at Kennedy High School. So that is getting used by local teens at the moment and that simulates impaired and distracted driving, uh, that's two different modes. The Sydney Vehicle, um, that's a powered go-kart where we simulate impaired driving. That's something that will be back in Grand Forks next year and I have access to it at any point. Um, but we will be doing Driving Skills for Success here again next year and that is a teen program. Is open to anyone across the region, uh, for teens to come in and experience some of the tools and learn some safe driving habits. We've added draw the abstracted goggles, those were a new purchase last year, um, that is probably one of the coolest things, I probably should have brought those with me, you guys could have tried them out. But, uh, they actually blackout their power and they blackout and simulate how long you're actually looking at your phone when you're distracted driving or. How long when you're dialing phone number or when you, when you're tired. Uh, that's another risk, so it simulates those three situations and we typically drive like dream night. Uh, I found out the Walsh County, one of deputies up there, um. Would wait for the black and then. Say catch and you, you can't see, so it never went really well, um, but it definitely got the point across. We partner with Highway Patrol all the time, um. We get rollover simulator really quite frequently, uh, over a month or so staying. Their summer event, um, again this year and they are hyper-pressed the rollover simulator as well, so it'll be on the Trinity League during that. So even though I'm gone, I'm not, not that far gone, um, we're making sure that we're getting that messaging across even in, in my league. So that, those are kind of some of the things, probably our most requested items. And we're like, we're always looking for new and exciting things to add to our repertoire, so, um. That being said, um, I would love to answer any questions you guys have about what I'm doing. Or you'd like to see more of, issues that you're seeing that you would like me to be aware of.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
These are pretty great programs, uh, what are you seeing in the numbers statewide as far as? It, it's been a few years now that the zeros went out there. It's impossible to not, it's, I don't know how you'll ever get to zero. But, uh, the number's been improving?
So, yes and no. Um, yes, in the sense that twenty twenty two. We had our lowest fatality number, it was the first time we've been under a hundred and I think this is twenty years. And we had ninety eight fatalities across the state in twenty twenty two. Last year we landed a little higher for some reason, um. That being said, is every time there's a fatality on our roads, I get an email from Maria, I love Maria, I hate when she emails me, uh, because it's never good news. But, uh, that being said, she sent out a status board update and what that does is it breaks down. Yearly totals where we were at this point last year, um, and right now we're sitting lower than where we were last year, so. Hopefully that twenty-three number was an outlier. Um, and not so much a, a trend indicator. And primary seat also went into effect, so we're anticipating that'll happen in our. Our number for this coming year too.
Any other questions?
I don't see you can bring this up in due business, but. I sense that, uh, yeah, trial loss or like, but the airport there, I met a couple people who reached out to me and. So subsequently I showed to some of our representation of this, and I actually think they're digging out the thing to do something out there. Uh, it's gonna require a collaboration with obviously the federal, but the, the DOT. State, but, you know, something like a, uh. Maybe a roundabout or, or basically anything other than what we currently have, I think, because that intersection's been historically just an absolute disaster. Uh, for. Interes of fatalities, I'm hearing about a six-year-old and I don't want to turn anybody's stomach, so I, I, I do believe that there's. That's something for us to maybe start pushing forward a little bit. But I don't think that that would be, uh, too much as a US highway.
I do believe the DOT has no plans to do a study on that intersection at this time.
That's step one, yeah.
And I can change those data changes, um. Every year. This is the very limited knowledge I have from the. State engineer. Um. But it's my understanding that they look at across the state where the kind of the big problem areas. And they break it down, not only. By state, but also they do look at rural versus urban and can, can designate that way as well. So as. Unfortunately, as the Dow is gonna, it will show. That we didn't have a fatality here this year, um, and that, that can have an impact on where those dollars go as well, um, I can also push up or down where they might. Choose to spend those dollars, um, time wise.
Mister Ross, uh, I would like to say you're doing a great job, uh. Having spent thirty-nine years at the Sheriff's Office and, and I did a lot of those programs myself. But, uh. I think what you're doing and how you're doing it is just great, uh, I, I think we need to keep this up. You know, we need to have the awareness out there of the Republic. Uh, I just, I found it so odd. That North Dakota DOT has had done those studies out there at that airport and, I don't know, five. It just, it doesn't even make sense to me, um. With the number of fatalities that have happened out there. Um. So I hope, I hope they come up with a plan.
Students, just three more, um, being born raised in Grand Forks and traveling that highway and. I, I travel on a regular basis now more than ever, probably. It, it's really hard to not see that be a priority, um, that's on us, so, so I feel you there.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you for the information.
Thanks very much.
And Mister Wes.
Chairmember, I have one item today, uh, is, consider the application. Uh, Brent Holersen, the Black GT second subdivision, uh, locally, second through five, Wally Township. Uh, property consists of twenty-eight point three acres. Opposing to, uh. Have about three lots on that acreage. Uh, property is located approximately five miles to the east of, by the city of Compton. At the intersection, county road at eight and county road seven. Property is currently agricultural fields, land uses consist of real residences and agricultural lands. According to land use plans within our agricultural area, the subject in our special component goals and policies. Uh, zoning ordinance, it is located in Wally Township, which. Ministers there all the zoning regulations, so county will buy. Um, pound of recommendation or reflect any. Issues there. Uh, for our purposes. We, uh, recognize it as, for subdivision purposes, as a three agricultural serve by zoning district. With five acre development density, as far as the background. Mr. Holler's, your question splits three lots off the existing parcel. Uh, he had previously owned GT first subdivision, which is located directly to the south. He planted that out in two thousand and seven. And built Hall Road in there, uh, Hall Road. Uh, has, uh, would. Provide the access to these three lots and communicate pride access to the GT first subdivision. Uh, the Hall Road would is proposed to be extended to the north, um, to serve the new lots. Uh, there would be no additional access to the county road system, uh, as part of this request. Wally Township Board has been notified and not made a recommendation at this time. Uh, staff, as far as staff comments. As I said, all the road northeast would be extended to the north. Staff would recommend extending those road easements all the way to the northerly property line. Provide connectivity, should the property to north ever be developed. Uh, to be consistent with requests. And County Commission policy, I'm also asking them to show seventy-five feet of county road easement along county road eight. Uh, there is also a floodplain. Nicole Creek, the lots two and three, as shown on the plat, oh. Uh, the hundred-year floodplain contours, they need a flat drawing and demonstrate that example for. Almost, it's just an outside of floodplain. With that, uh, planning staff recommends, uh, approval with the following conditions. Uh, that the plan department was received, a township recommendation. For this request, probably flat being recorded in the county reporter's office. Uh, second condition is that the road easement for Hall Road shall be extended to the northern property line. Prior to the plat being recorded in the county reporter's office. And the third condition is that. A seventy-five foot county road easement. For common road age should be shown on the plat prior to the being recorded by the county quarters office. And as a sign note, the county planning commission did approve the request today. After three, uh, yeah, to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Oh, I would make the, I would make the motion to approve. Set with the conditions.
Mister Ross. Mister, about this. Mister Hagan, any comments or questions?
I'm good, thank you.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Yeah. Thank you. Mister West.
The Phoenix issues, um. One item for consideration today. That's a MOA with the. Well, we're thinking of DOT. County. Shiple Federal Highway. Um, on three bridge replacement projects. Um. Now, just for the board's awareness, these. This particular project, which is a hundred percent paid by the state. Um, is the same project that we got awarded, a little over a year ago, I suppose, um. One bridge is, was put in and planned to be removed, it's on just a third trail that isn't needed anymore. Two of them were being converted. Were to be converted to low water crossings. And the DOT has since, um. Taken back that funding and low water crossing, however, they will fund. The preliminary yet, and environmental things and the removal of the old bridge. So that's still a valuable, uh, asset to the county, but. Those two little water crossings, the public is expecting those, and so I have money earmarked in our budget to do that at later date. But. Um. So this MOA would outline the expectations of those projects, which are pretty straightforward, the bridges were, they're the old trust to sound bridges, which. They were offered for. Um. Offered for adoption on these ones, nobody came forward, so therefore they can be removed. Um, however, our consultant has to do some documentation. Uh, before they are removed for historical purposes, which is pretty standard practice. Um. Other than that, I believe. As long as it has reviewed. You okay with it? And with that, I would ask for approval and chairman's signature. On the, uh, MOA. And this is a DocuSign document, which. I think this came maybe three weeks ago, so. I'll have to review where it is, if it's in. Nelson's email or Mr. Hagan's email. For where it's at or get it reset, it's.
Good.
It's probably fired anyway.
Three agreements?
There's three separate ones, yes.
One brief stuff.
Correct, yes.
Alright. Any questions of Mister West?
I wouldn't agree for both of the motion with the appropriate signatures.
Second.
Mister Ross is second. Uh. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Opposed? Pass. Thank you.
Thank you, I will, I will be in touch, I'll reach out to the DOT as to where this is at electronically and. Get back to you.
What, what's going to be, what are the terms in the email, what, what would it be called?
Well, it's from DocuSign, so it's.
I know, but I did, some of those come to us before we have meetings.
Right.
So I can't, I don't know what to sign until I talk to you.
Correct.
Just let me, let me know when you.
Let me see where it's at and I'll, I'll get in touch with you, Commissioner, and, and I, I don't know the contract number on it, which is a lot of times where it comes up, I don't track anything by that. I use the project numbers, so.
Alright.
I'll have to figure it out, but.
Okay.
Um, we. That's easily done, uh, just for the board's awareness, our mill and overlay was finished up on Friday.
But.
Turned out very nice, um, very good job. And a week ago, swing construction started the bridge on Kelvin Five by Mandeville, so that road's closed and is starting. Um, on this recent two which. Splat terrain is putting a damper on a lot of things, but we're still moving forward, uh. Our soul shed, the foundations were poured today. That's moving forward, um. Thank you, our crews are busy, it's gonna be a good year, but.
And first question, I kind of five and six. Are they completely finished or is the striping left or, or what, what's left, have they done?
Oh, um, so pavement's done?
Yeah.
They finished the, the little bit of gravel off the ends of, you know, because the pavement's tires, you got a little bump. So they put a little, put a little gravel at the end of every driveway and road. That finished today, the striping needs to be done, it'll be done next week and we put new mailboxes in, I believe that's next week too, after that. Uh, that should be it.
Stay pretty clear for driving now, without any single lanes and that kind of thing, is that right?
Correct, but, yeah, clear as anyone, back up to fifty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mister Forrest.
Yeah, thanks, Mister Chairmember of the Commission, um, just a few things for the Commission, um. Regarding the request for qualifications on commercial real estate professional representation. Um, we did receive two statements, qualifications from two different firms. Uh, and when the Sheriff's Relocation Committee reviewed, uh, based on the review and the criteria that was listed in the RFQ. Uh, we would recommend that the county work with the code of commercial if the county is in need of commercial real estate representation. And, and that was based on the criteria listed on the RFQ, um. So I don't know. So if, uh, this was upset or Miss Nelson did, is there a motion to actually accept that or? If it's just a recommendation, but. That's the committee recommendation is to work with. To go to commercial if need be, based on the responses.
I think we can give approval. Based on whether it's needed.
Right.
That, that's the question, that. And there's one, did you see anything wrong with, with making that motion and approving it, that? Maybe not using it?
Mister Chairmembers of the board, just for clarification, so I'm understanding, when you say if needed, are you thinking? They would elect to sign with the. Agent at a later date if they determine that there's that need, or are you asking for the board's? Approval to sign on with an agent today?
No, no, I, I wouldn't be asking the words, uh, approval to sign on to anything today, just, um. Based on, on their response, we only received two, I think, that would be the firm, the, the, the group would recommend we sign on with if. We did indeed need commercial real estate representation. So I don't think we need to commit to anything today, but if we need, if we do indeed, we need to go that route, that would, we would probably bring that at a later date.
Question I have is what would cause us? Question I have is what would cause us to go with someone and or not?
Di- different scenarios, purchasing for one, uh entering into lease of existing uh facilities, we may need one. Uh those two scenarios be the most likely.
Yeah.
If we renovate existing building, we certainly could not need. Representation.
All right, so so would, any questions of Mr. Ford, what what do you think, uh there was a commission?
I don't know, is this a motion that here is being asked for?
The the motion being requested is, yes, the decision is made that we need a broker to step in. Can we, can we pick one now that they've done this? Search, or do we need joint?
I think I confused the board, I apologize, um I used the wrong terminology, I don't think, we don't, I won't, we don't need a motion. Um I was just coming before on behalf of the Sheriff's Committee to let you know that that that's our recommendation, is to go to Dakota Commercial if and when. Uh it's determined we need representation.
But if there is a motion, then when it comes up eventually. Wouldn't we have to? Request other people to reply again?
No, I don't, well, I'll defer to them as well.
This is all that we should get here.
Mr. Chair Members of the Board, um if I'm understanding correctly, it sounds like this is just for informational purposes today. Um I think the Sheriff's Committee is reviewing some other options as well, and maybe we'll come forward with some recommendations later. I think it would be appropriate and in accordance with the law if. This was addressed at the time that the other options are reviewed, and then the board can decide. If this is something they wish to pursue.
Okay, makes sense to me. Would you agree?
Yeah.
All right, the next topic?
Very good, uh the next topic at hand is all true health systems is offering. Uh the county naming rights to the drama elevator, so as we all know, the new hospital's going up, and the the county did um. Provide a six hundred thousand dollar gift through ARPA. Or donation to go towards the new trauma center. And um it it did, those funds did go to installing a state-of-the-art trauma elevator. Uh I I was offered a tour of the new hospital, got to look at the elevator, it's it's pretty impressive. Um and so what what you have before you is uh an agreement, uh chair, uh a donor recognition agreement. And the elevator would just be. So uh named after Grand Forks County, uh if you scroll down a little more, Ms. Nelson, there you go, there's, that's what a plaque would look like. Uh but I'm asking uh for board to approve chair's signature on the donor recognition agreement, assuming the commission. Approves that thing.
Big conference.
In that commercial.
So.
Second.
Ross did. Second is by.
Me.
Oh. Mr. Beach, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh. Yeah. All right.
The next thing is a Grand Sky, um but Mr. Sawyer's here, so I'm actually gonna turn it over to him, uh he's been addressed for it.
It's wanting to get started, the Tom Sawyer trauma elevator might have been a little work. Uh thank you, Mr. Ford, um Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Uh back in June of twenty twenty-two, uh the commission approved a uh Grand Sky. Using legislative funds to uh re-engineer reinstalling new beyond line of sight system for Grand Sky that allows. Uh unmanned aircraft to fly without chase planes. That approval was for uh software and for engineering the system after our previous supplier, L three Harris, announced they were exiting the industry. Entirely, you get to find an entirely new provider, we found one at the time, Talus was one of the only providers that could meet the requirements of a system like ours. And so they were granted a sole source contract, that contract ended uh June eighth of this year. And so I am here to request funds to extend that contract. Further uh and with software as a service, uh they have a software as a service proposal to us. Um the total amount of our request is one million fifty-three thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy cents. Uh that includes um the software as a service contract plus a ten percent contingency, in case a little bit more uh software coding has to happen. Um and uh this would take us through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five uh for this capability. So I'm respectfully request approval of that, I'm sorry, of legislative funds from the twenty twenty-three legislative section, right?
Questions?
Think it could have been done for the sixty cents, the seventy cents, but the whole proof. Second, aye.
Mr. Ross, Mr. Ross, second. All, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, pass to him.
Thank you.
Very important, thank you.
Mr. Chair, the last last thing is if Mr. Ross doesn't mind, I'll I'll follow up with you sir on the. On that intersection of County Five and Highway Two by the airport. Um I'm in the process of putting together the county's legislative priorities, and then, of course, we will fire the Chambers team, Grand Forks Legislature team. And so I'll just, if that's all right, I'll I'll get with you later on offline. I think this is something that maybe also the Chambers team Grand Forks would support if we get it. Get further enough down the road.
I already have. Guarantee on that.
Wonderful.
So yeah, and our legislative representation. And the chamber, so I had a few tearful phone calls from people that are just fed up with that intersection, and so uh. I think, I think the chamber and the and and our state representation is. Fielding some of those same calls and emails, and I think the time is definitely past to come to address that intersection. And especially with the uh. The initial growth happening at the base, like Grand Sky, it's gonna be an ever busier intersection, so to do something permanent out there. Um it would be a great path to talk. As long as we can get people in the airport during construction.
Yes, sir, excellent, that's that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Wong, do you have anything for us today?
I'm Steve and the board, thank you.
Any reports, start with Commissioner Wagan.
I don't have anything new for the board today, thank you.
Commissioner Ross?
Uh we had our uh. Construction meeting out at the Correctional Center, you uh. Uh Assessment Center this morning and uh. Uh. Went over some funding issues and what's going on and. Things are moving along really well, so um. I told them that uh. We uh we need to to stick uh. Stick with our the program and stop bleeding uh extra money, you know, wants versus needs, so uh. Anyway, uh this Thursday, we've got another meeting for the Sheriff's relocation. Uh at three thirty. And uh so we will uh. Hopefully kind of narrow that thing down on uh on Thursday. And uh see we'll see what we can come up with. That's it.
Ross did.
I have AMPO tomorrow, which I plan to. Casually bring up what we just discussed, so you, this is reported myself, uh. Because it'd be nice to have them uh on the same page for some project of that size, and uh. That just for the the board's information after consulting with the state's attorney office that. I'm not going to participate in the sheriff's discussions because many of those that that uh turned in. Uh are finds that they're close friends with or have done previous business with, so I'm gonna watch out for them, it's announced.
Yes. We have to prove. So recusal of this, or is that only when the vote takes place?
I think when the vote takes place.
Mr. Beach?
The Grand Forks um County Zon Board meeting met today, um some of the numbers were a little bit lower than before. Uh I believe that it was around a hundred and fifty um children that were in foster care. Um those that were looking for adoption, uh that number was maybe twenty thirty. Uh that that were looking for placements, um. They their staffing is going well, they have a couple shortages, uh two or three areas, one in foster care, one in. Uh foster care, foster care physician, one foster care CPS, and one in eligibility. We also did the review of the director, and that went very well as well, um so it was a good meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, I just had an uneventful uh EDC meeting, but what I'd like to do is thank Debbie and your staff for another. Essentially heroic effort on elections, and I think you might have another one coming up, so you're gearing up for that already, but. Your your folks just do a great job, everybody, the elections are run. Very honestly and fair and so on, and thank you for that.
Yeah.
I concur, I get nothing but compliments, I should have said something earlier, well done.
Yep.
Okay, unfinished new business, the N A C C A standing committees?
You want to apply for uh one of the committees that uh North Department Association of. County Commissioners, um that's available, and the date is in there, that you have to let them know if you want to, if you're interested in any of their committees. I have one item that's not on unfinished business, and I need. Someone to serve as Chair of the Camisay Board that meets on Monday at nine a.m., and it cannot be the Chair or Vice Chair if it is on the ballot.
Are you volunteering? Anyone fighting for the spot?
He, we fought out, party, I need me, so.
All right, uh we need a motion, just to volunteer, that's good, all right. Thanks for bringing that up. And. Respondents, there's some premium discounts from for every county, I see.
Just to, that's information.
That's just information?
Yep.
Great, um. Anything else?
Turn it over to Kim.
Kim.
In my moment, so a motion to adjourn, please.
I guess. All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sheriff, you do the honors.
I think you have five or two.